We'd like to go ahead and get our meeting started. Thank you for coming to the Planning Commission here in West Jordan for tonight, July 17, 2018. First, I'd like to recognize that we have six members of the Planning Commission here. Chairman Pack is excused for the evening. First up on our agenda, we have the consent calendar. There's a motion to approve the minutes.
Simon.
We have an approval from Judy, seconded by Kelvin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Vote unanimous. We'll move along here to our first public hearing. 6732 South property continued from 5:15-18. This is approximately, it's at approximately 6732 South 5600 West. It's a future land use plan amendment for approximately 7.33 acres from high-density residential to public facilities and rezone 7.33 acres from PC to PF zone. City of West Jordan is the applicant. And we have Scott Langford here on behalf of Lisa Elgin. Flora, yours, sir.
Thanks, Vice Chair Quinney. I'll be real quick. This is essentially a housekeeping item where we're requesting that the land use map and the zoning be changed to match what is currently constructed along 5600 West. Several years ago, as part of the road widening project for 56 West, they were able to acquire a lot of property to do a regional stormwater detention basin. It's a linear basin, as you can see, and will remain as public, open space. And so, again, this is a housekeeping item that we're requesting that the commission forward a positive recommendation onto the city council. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Anybody have questions for staff? Okay, so this is noticed as a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open that up to any public comments. If you come to the podium, state your name and, for the record, then just address the commission. We'll entertain public comments now. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for the commission for any questions. Commissioner Green.
I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the future land use amendment from high-density residential to public facilities and rezone from PC-ZC to PF Zone District for 6732 South proper, located at 6732 South 5600 West, 6852 South 5600 West, and 5618 West 70th South.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Any additions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, six to zero. Next item on the public hearing, Copper Valley Estates West. This is at 8478 South Maple Water Drive, preliminary subdivision plot or plat, 44 lots on 14.84 acres. An R110E zone, Marilyn Bodden is the applicant. Is she here? Come on forward, sir. Just make sure to state who you are for the record and we'll give you your time.
My name is Dean Bodden, and I think what we're presented is fairly straightforward and compatible with the community, the way it is there, and so I would hope that's the way you see it.
That was succinct. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll give you some time if we need to after the public hearing. Ray, I believe you're on, right?
Thanks. So this is located just on the west side of the Mountain View Corridor. This is just an overhead area of the site. The zone on the property is R110E, and the request is just a single-family residential subdivision on the property. And just looking at the future land use map, it's designated as medium-density residential. Ronwood Park is to the south. And this is the subdivision layout. It's pretty straightforward. It's just a loop street with a small cul-de-sac in the center of it. It'll be access to the north, to the west. And the subdivision meets the minimum lot size and frontage requirements of the zone. We really don't see any issues with it, so our recommendation would be for approval, subject to meeting the conditions of approval on page two of your staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we will open this up to the public. If there be anybody who would like to comment on this item, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission.
As I said in the pre-meeting, this is my backyard, and I think this is a great fit, so, good job. I think it'll be a great asset to the community. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the Planning Commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat for Copper Valley Estates West, located at 8478 South Maple Water Drive in the R110E zone with the conditions listed on page two of the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Luthy and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Looks like Commissioner Green has something he wants to add.
I just want to note for the record, because I pulled out my calculator, in case we have somebody that complains about high density in the city at a future basis, this works out to be 2.96 units per acre. So that's well less than the density that's, you know, the quarter-acre lot, so...
Okay, anything else to add to the conversation here? All right, we've got our motion and our second. It's all in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Any opposed? By the same? Okay, six to nothing in favor. Moving on to item number four, Les Schwab Tire, approximately 7800 South Highland Loop Road. Preliminary site plan and conditional use permit for vehicle and equipment repair in an SC-2 zone, Les Schwab. David Maroney is the applicant. If you'd like, come on forward, sir.
My name is Corey Nelson, with CTA Architects and Engineers, representing the applicant. So the project is approximately 13,000 square foot Les Schwab building. Prototypical layout, eight bay, back-to-back store. We did have a meeting with the design review committee and received some comments about the exterior elevations. And we did update the plans, as you can, or the elevations you can see here, with some additional bump outs, a change of material to red CMU, to break up the facades at least every 50 feet. So we did respond to those. And we also brought a materials board tonight with examples of the materials for the building.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, Ray, you're on for this one as well.
I've got a question, sorry.
Go ahead.
I chimed in late here. Just explain to us a little bit of the layout as far as traffic flow in and out. We talked about it a little bit in the pre-meeting. The bottom of the screen there, is that going to be a right-in, right-out only? I don't know if you can answer those questions for us?
I believe the bottom will be right-in, right-out. And then there's a second driveway up at the top, let me see. Correct. So yeah, right-in, right-out here.
Good. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I wondered if there would be outside storage overnight of automobiles?
I don't believe so. I know all the tire storage is designed to be inside of the building, so there won't be any outside tires. And then we do have a trash enclosure. As far as vehicles, I don't believe they'll be parked overnight.
Yeah, and I can clarify that, yeah. The only outside storage would be the trash, which is in the enclosure, but all storage of tires and any materials, including the, excuse me, including waste tires would be inside. I'm Zach Graham with CTA Architects also.
I just wondered about cars, if they have to be left there overnight, if they would be parked?
Yes, but it's not typical for them to be left overnight, but yes, if anything happened to have to be overnight, it would be in the parking lot.
Because that kind of opens it to vandalism and that type of thing, so...
Okay, yeah, their typical operations would be no overnight. They kind of pride themselves in being quick, quick service, getting people in and out.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bernowski, you've got something to add here for us?
Yeah, the question was, is this a right-in, right-out? Yes. The applicant's required to build a raised island in 78 South, approximately 100 feet beyond the edge of the driveway going west. So it would be very hard to make a left turn in on 78 South.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Very hard.
All right. We'll invite you back up if we have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Ray, you're up again.
Okay. So this is a request for conditional use permit approval for vehicle and equipment repair, and then also for preliminary site plan review. I think we, just some time ago, we had approved, the planning commission approved, the subdivision on this piece of property. The Smiths is just located off to the right side of the site plan here. Have two accesses, one off Highland Loop Road and then also one off of 7800 South. Parking will be located here. There's plenty of parking. It does meet code. The service bays are going to be located here, and then on the west side of the building as well. You saw these, the elevation drawings. And the site is going to be landscaped. This is just a landscaping plan. It's not required as part of preliminary approval, but they've gone to the point where they've pretty well designed the site and the landscaping for the site. So we really don't see any issues with it. We feel that it fits well with the neighborhood. The hours of operation, I think, are going to be basically from eight to six, so we don't see any issues with, Monday through Saturday. We really don't see any issues with that or any of the potential adjoining uses, so our recommendation would be for approval, subject to the conditions of approval in your staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, this is also a public notice, so we will open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that and bring it back to the Planning Commission.
Do you know, I realized I do have a question. On this, on the preliminary site plans, do we normally put the street signage on it? I was just wondering where that's going to go, what it might look like.
No, that's typically with the final approval.
Commissioner Hanson.
If we're ready, I'll be glad to make a recommendation.
It's all yours, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Based on the findings set forth in this staff report, I move that the Planning Commission approve the preliminary site plan and conditional use permit for the Les Schwab Tire Store, located approximately 7800 South Highland Loop Road in the SC-2 Community Shopping Center Zone with the conditions listed in section one of the staff report.
Commissioner England.
I second that.
All right, any additional information? We have a motion from Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner England. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, pass it six to zero. Moving right along here, item number five. Mitchell Place subdivision 5411 West, 90th South, preliminary subdivision plat, 82 lots on 64.771 acres, and amending lots two, three, and four of 90th South Street Church subdivision. R18E zone, Mitchell Investment LLC, Sean Michelle is the applicant. Is he present? The applicant here? Just some time, sir, you're on.
My name is Troy Wolverton. I'm representing the Mitchells on this particular application. Address is 2110 North Redwood Road. The application before you is a residential subdivision, gone through a zoning application, and the staff report indicates that we have complied with the requirements. If there are no questions, we really have very little to offer on this, in that it complies with the code and meets the requirements.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Green.
I do have a question. I'm trying to figure out, the application says that there's 82 lots on 64 acres. Are we including lot 82 as part of the 64 acres?
Yes, the lot 82 is Westridge Academy, which was, the whole parcel was originally Westridge Academy, so the subdivision lots that are now created is a portion of that. And in order to keep that whole in the subdivision, then Westridge Academy itself becomes part of the subdivision.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, Ray, dazzle us.
I better push the button. In the pre-meeting, we talked about these lots along the south side of the, sorry, on the west side of the property. There is an easement or drainage easement along the creek here, and that's why these lots are kind of deep. It will be the responsibility of the property owner to maintain those areas that are within that easement. I think that's one of the reasons that some of these lots are fairly large or fairly deep here. We did ask the applicant as part of our initial review to take a look at the configuration of those lots, and this is what they came back with. They may have some additional reasons for configuring those the way that they did. Yes, you have looked at this before. There was some concern about the height of the properties here on the east side, and the applicant can also address just what they're doing to try to minimize the grade difference there between those two developments. It is zoned R18 and R18E. The lots do comply with the zoning requirements, and so our recommendation would be for approval, subject again to the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
So I guess I'm going to go back to the, so, but we did not rezone 64 acres. We only rezoned the R18, and lot 82 on this map is actually in the PF. Are we, is the subdivision splitting off lot 82 to stay in the PF, and the rest of it is, the rest of it is the R18E that has the 80-something houses on it?
The subdivision, all it does is that it defines where property lines are. The zoning doesn't, won't change.
Okay. I, I'm just afraid that, just, this is maybe a perceptual thing, but it shows we're, based on the actual application, we're subdividing and putting 64, or we're doing 82 lots on 64 acres, and that's kind of, if we get the truth in zoning, truth in subdivision act ever passed by Congress, never mind, that'll be a different story. But if we get the, that doesn't seem quite as reflective of what we're really trying to do here with the subdivision, so that's just a personal, you know, perception, that it seems like we're only, what we're really doing is putting 64 units in a smaller acreage, so I just want to make sure we're clear that that's what we're doing.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we will open this up to the public as well. Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I believe it was mentioned by Ray that the developer will kind of explain how he's going to handle the grading on this, because it's so much higher than the surrounding neighborhood.
Come on back up, please.
For the cul-de-sac road that's proposed there, we have been working with the staff to make some adjustments to the sewer outfall, so that we can keep that road as low as we can. And the cul-de-sac portion along those southerly lots is matching the existing ground location in that area. So that's our effort to keep that ground as low as it can. The circle of the cul-de-sac itself is matching the existing grade, so we're not in a position where we have to raise that up to drain to 90th South. We're working on an easement and some other things to be able to keep that as low as we possibly can.
Commissioner England.
Has there been any discussions amongst the team putting this subdivision together about limiting, you know, two stories along that? In all honesty, this is my backyard. I've opposed this from the beginning, simply because of the grade. Has there been any discussions to limit that, to maybe just the ramblers or the ranch-style homes?
There has not, although that is something that we could certainly consider or at least evaluate with the staff during the final application, through the final approval process with the subdivision. Where we're at preliminary at this point, we're kind of tying down the concept and so forth. There's obviously some more details to work through, but that's obviously something that can be discussed.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Dial M for murder, or...
Any other? I'm waiting, we did the public hearing, waiting on a motion. Commissioner Green.
I have, I have to be honest with you. If I, I don't think there's enough with the three lots that I really hate in this subdivision. There's not enough to vote against it. If I could figure out how to do it, I would. Just for the record, lot number one is, just seems like a terrible lot, and the two lots over on 90th South that are just to the, inside of 90th, that are off of that cul-de-sac, they, that long, narrow one, and the one that's got half the yard taken out with the cul-de-sac, don't make any sense to me. I don't know how you'd build a house on that and have a yard that has half your yard cut up by a cul-de-sac. And the other one with a long fence along 90th South with a really narrow face, that to me, that I'd rather see, I'd rather see that as one lot, call it good. I think you'd be better off as one lot, but I, I don't think that's enough to vote against it. Is it, Mr. City Attorney?
No, you would have to have a specific criteria that you would have to be able to identify or list where they don't meet the terms of the ordinance, so nothing you've described really details that.
That's what I figure. And the same with the lot number one. It's kind of a weird lot that sits next to the industrial facility, and that just doesn't make a lot of sense there. But those are my comments. I recommend that if you look at that, you go back and look at that in a, in a way that may make more sense when you develop that, but that's just me.
Commissioner, Mr. Langford.
If I may, and Mr. Murray can jump in and correct anything that's not legal, but in situations like this that we've dealt with in the past, it's always very helpful to have a notation on the plat, if we have easements that encumber properties that, you know, I'm not going to wordsmith it on the fly, but if there were, if one of the conditions the commission could consider is that a note be placed on the plat that would notify the owners of these lots, one through, what, 19? They are responsible for the maintenance and something to the fact that they can't encumber that with structures and things like that. That would help us five, 10 years down the road, where if there is an issue, if drainage is being blocked or altered in some way, we have something that we can easily point to and say, listen, you can't put your shed there. You can't, you can't masquerade your property and flood out your neighbor, those types of things. So that would be helpful, just from an administrative standpoint. But I'm coming late to the game, so if Nate wants to comment too.
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. So that easement, I don't believe it's in the name of the city. I believe, I'm testing my memory, but I believe the easement is actually held by the adjoining property owner, which is an apartment complex. And generally, those easements have, you know, verbiage on the recorded document that says what's, what the purpose of the easement is for and that sort of stuff. And one thing we can do, like Scott mentioned, is make sure that the plat has a note that reflects what restrictions are on that property. And if there are any additional restrictions that we feel need to be placed on that property to, or notifications to the property owner, so that they know what their obligations are, we can do that, just to clear up any future confusion.
And secondly, the second point that I had, with the uniqueness of some of these lots, especially with the encumbrance of the easements, again, in the past, we've, in these types of situations, we've asked or required the developer to provide plot plans that show the feasibility of how homes could be actually laid out on the property. That really helps speed the building permit process, if we can say, yeah, it can be built upon. And I don't know if we can be specific, lot one, lot 17, 18, and 19, but to our assistant city manager's point, these lots do meet the frontage and bulk standards that the ordinance requires, but we need to be able to make sure that when we come to actually build something on the property, that it can meet the parameters.
Commissioner Luthy.
I have a couple of questions along the frontage of 90th. So because it is 90th, they are required to meet the new landscaping requirements along 90th with the wider right-of-way area in there. Is that correct? On top of that, the second part of that question is that they are required to put some sort of a, either a concrete wall or a block wall or something to be able to be a little more substantial than any kind of vinyl fencing or chain-link fencing or any of that.
So are you referring to the new ordinance for requirements along arterials? And I guess my question is to the engineers, is it a... And I guess my question is to the engineers, is, is it a, is Ninetieth South an arterial?
Yes.
It is an arterial and it's a UDOT arterial, so they'll be required to get permits from UDOT. As far as the walls, I think that that is within the city's, uh, ability to regulate.
Okay, so we, do we need to put some sort of recommendation that that's what we expect? Or is that something that will be handled on staff level just with a recommendation from us that no vinyl fence or chain link or anything else be allowed along that edge?
That's gonna, uh, masonry wall is going to be required along the arterial, arterial street.
Okay.
It's six feet.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Chair, um, quick question on the easement, um, can that at any point be vacated? Sorry, vacated, can we vacate, can the easement ever be vacated? How, what, the reason I'm asking is I live in a neighborhood where we have a surprise easement that was vacated and it, and you know, it's only been ten years, so at some point, can homeowners build on that? Is it always going to be an easement, will their title companies always be able to inform them of that? No matter who, how many times the property transfers ownership?
Well, the proper term would be, uh, release of easement. That cities or governmental entities vacate easements and private landowners typically just release their easement. So if at any time they filed a document releasing their easement, whoever the owner of the easement is and records it against the property, then it could be released. So, but of course it's subject to those owners, whether, uh, it sounds like it might be the homeowners association or whoever, so, but it would be discretionary up to them.
And that, that lasts forever until it is released?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Commissioner Green.
So, Mr. Langford's got a comment.
Mr. Langford. Sorry, just, just to clarify, um, the, the ordinance that, that would revamp the, uh, the arterial street frontage, I do not believe that actually has been passed by council as of yet. We do have on the books though, ordinances that do require the ma- you know, the, the, the masonry wall. But the, the new landscape standards and setback standards, I believe, have not been adopted yet. Although it could potentially be applied under the pending ordinance rule as long as it does pass.
So, so that, that modifies my question, but it'll come back to, it, it'll come back to the same, the same que- thing that Commissioner Luthy asked, if that's a pending ordinance, um, can we place that condition in the conditions of approval that the part, that, that, that a part of the subdivision, the property will be set aside to meet that? Uh, and then if it, then obviously if the, the, the ordinance doesn't pass, then it, it would be null and void. Can we, can we add that as a condition?
Sure, yeah, if you, as long as you, uh, limit it that way and just say, subject to the pending ordinance rule, if, you know, that, that it meets the requirements of that ordinance if it is in fact approved.
Thank you.
I did, but I just lost my train of thought, that's no good, right? Oh, I do remember what I was going to say, we were talking about that easement. We had discussed in the pre-meeting that that was going to be used as the detention facility for the entire neighborhood. So that easement's permanent no matter what, if that's the case. Because if the stormwater's going there, you're going to have to have some easements through some of these lots, probably PUEs, to be able to drain it to those easements, so it'll never go away if it becomes stormwater easements.
I think that does bring up a good question, um, I believe that easement is actually, owned if you will, by the, a neighboring property, which is that apartment complex. So, um, it might be something we need to consider, whether we place a duplicate easement over the same property to ensure that should it get vacated, which I don't see any reason for it to do so, because they're using it for their stormwater as well. But, um, in the very unlikely event that the neighboring parcel tried to vacate it or do something else with it, um, this one would still remain in effect. I don't know, that's something we, that we should top, probably discuss as a staff.
And, and I'd recommend that if the city's counting upon that for part of its storm drainage system or at least for handling storm drainage in this subdivision, that if the city wants that to be long-term, the only way to, for that to continue long-term is if the city itself owns it and the best way to place that easement is on this plat, so.
Commissioner Green.
Would that be something that we need to include in any of the, is that something that the staff will just do?
Yeah, it's, you can just direct staff to do it, they can complete that process.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, and so does that make it over capacity if the apartment complex is also counting on that as their easement for their, their location and we're adding it to this subdivision? Does that, uh, create a problem?
No, it, it's actually quite oversized as it currently sits.
Commissioner Luthy.
I've got another question for Mr. Nelson here, um, remind me, in your city ordinance, do you prefer to have them where multiple owners, like it's shown here, would have portions of that storm drain detention back there, or would it be better to just have it part as one lot? Like if they just redid the subdivision so that it's one lot maintained by the HOA or whatever else, so that it wasn't this problem?
What we, we frequently have easements that are located on a, on an individual residential lot. The advantage of that is that the city doesn't have to maintain it. We, we have an easement that allows us to store water on a lot and to place pipes and, 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 you know, flood control structures with on, within a lot. But as far as maintaining the surface, um, you know, mowing and, and weeding and garbage and, you know, you know, all that kind of stuff, um, we'd rather not. So in this case, each person, you know, they own that lot all the way to that end and they can do stuff with it, they can put in a playground, they can put, you know, playthings, um, they can put, they can landscape it, garden, you know, whatever they want to do. They just can't put permanent structures in it, so it's not totally useless to them.
So this is preferential than having that be all one lot that's just maintained by the, an HOA? So whereas the city's still not maintaining it, but an HOA is maintaining it?
I would say so, and, and another thing about HOAs is we, we find that HOAs work best when they've got something of value that everybody treasures, like a, uh, a, a playground or a clubhouse or something like that, when it's just maintaining a random piece of property, it tends to get neglected and the HOAs tend to not.
Well, and that's where I was going with this, I, I do not like this at all. And I've said that from the beginning when the plan came through originally, that it looks just like that you've tried to pack too many houses in altogether and that it could be a great open space area to take that area out, make it a lot that has a park for the community to be able to use, rather than just have them as weird shaped lots for the people that are actually going to have to buy and maintain these lots.
Yeah, the only way we would probably support that is if it were privately owned and maintained by an HOA, because the city does not want to.
No, sure, yeah, and that's, that's where I was going with that, okay.
Okay, any other discussion, any other thing? Commissioner Green.
All right, I'm going to make attempt at this. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat for the Mitchell Place subdivision located at fifty-four eleven West Ninetieth South in an RE, R one eight E zone with the conditions listed on page stu- two of the staff report plus two following conditions. I think there were four, so condition number five, the subdivision plat is clearly annotated with the drainage easement along Bingham Creek, drainage easement area, and that the future property owners are adequately notified about the easement and the building restriction, restrictions in that easement. Condition number six, the properties that border Ninetieth South are subject to the pending ordinance rule, with the buffered landscape along Ninetieth South contingent on the approval, the approval of that ordinance by city council.
We get that, okay? Okay, Commissioner England. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner England. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries six to zero, thank you, um, moving right along. Item number six on our agenda is Copper Rim, approximately the northwest corner of seventy-eight hundred South and fifty-eight hundred West. This is a preliminary subdivision plat for four hundred and fifty-seven lots and preliminary townhome site plan in a PC zone. You moved along too fast before I finished what I was reading here. CW Land Company, Colin Wright is our applicant, are you here, sir?
Good evening, I'm Greg Day, uh, twelve twenty-two Legacy Boulevard Suite Number Six, Centerville, Utah. I'm here representing Colin Wright, he's not in attendance.
Go ahead and proceed, it's all yours.
We're very happy to get to this point, it's been a long time coming, we appreciate staff, we appreciate the opportunity to, to be in West Jordan, we really think it's a great area. We're fully in support of the staff report, I think they amended their conditions and I think we'd support those amended conditions, so, um, yeah, we'd be very grateful for your support tonight.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Thank you, uh, Ray.
Can I ask a question real quick? Sorry, a question had come up earlier and I just want your verification on this. The preserve lots, the big nice lots, what size and acreage are those?
Ray, you may have to tell me, eight thousand square foot minimum?
What, what are you using, what are, I mean, I get what the minimum is, what are you using? What have you laid out, what are you planning on most of them being? Are most of them eight thousand, are most of them larger than that?
You know, I don't know the exact percentage of which ones are which size, but yeah, they're eight thousand minimum and of course they get larger than that.
Mr. McCandless.
Are you saying for the preserve lots, the larger preserve, yeah. That's correct.
You okay over there? Thinking about that still?
No, I am, I wish I had an answer, but.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, um, on, uh, phase nine, you're showing an age restriction on two hundred and four units. Uh, what is that age restriction?
You know, I don't know, it's going to be an age restricted, an age qualified product. I, I don't have the answer on, if you're, are you asking like what age, how, what, what that is? Is that your specific question?
Yes.
I, I don't have a very good answer for you on that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, Ray, this is, this is your show tonight.
Mr. Popular here, um, again, the applicant is requesting a preliminary subdivision, preliminary site plan approval, you've seen this, this general layout, uh, a couple of times now. It went through the, the rezoning first and then the, the preliminary development plan and that preliminary development plan, which set the, the overall density of the project, was, uh, recommended for approval by this body and then it went on to city council. City council adopted that, uh, preliminary development plan for this project. Just over time, the plan has been changed a little bit. The, I think, uh, initially the commercial phase was increased substantially, the size of the commercial, uh, phases, was increased in size, there was an institutional phase that was added and lots have been adjusted a little bit just to accommodate, uh, accommodate those things. But now we have a, uh, the preliminary development plan, preliminary, I mean, sorry, the preliminary subdivision that's coming before you. They're looking for approval for all, um, all nine phases plus the commercial phase and the institutional phase tonight. And then also for the site plan approval, just showing what, where the different amenities are going, what the landscaping could be or is, is intended to be, uh, for those open spaces that are shown on the plan. In terms of the to- total, the total number of units have not changed, the number of townhomes have not changed. It's all consistent with the, the preliminary development plan that was approved, so, um, as, as far as I know, the, the product has not changed. Any modification or significant modification to this plan, as it's been approved by the city council, would require it to go back to the planning commission and council, so. So our recommendation would be for, uh, uh, approval. Again, subject to those conditions that are listed in the staff report and I'd be happy to address any questions that you have.
Thank you, any questions, Commissioner Green.
Phase nine, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I, I, where I think Judy was going with this, but I'm going to go there, phase nine, uh, is listed as age restricted. So I'm going to assume that that's going to be senior housing since that's the only age restricted housing we can do in the city. Does that have to have, that doesn't, because this is a PC, we don't have to have senior housing overlay or anything to make that age restricted?
Correct, we do not, it's in the planned community zone and as you'll recall, the, um, senior housing is exempt under the cap and grade requirement, so, uh, so it's.
My, I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to sound terrible, but I'm going to say it. It's, I think it's crazy and I, I somehow I think we need, I, I'll, I'll just go on the record that we need to look at this because we're, we're seeing a trend of, of using the senior housing to, to pack the, I'm going to say this, to pack the density. What, what concerns me about this, about phase nine, is that twenty-seven percent of all the units in the, in this development, in this development are in that one little area. I did the math, two hundred and four out of seven hundred and fifty-three units, twenty-seven percent is that one little area. It's got eleven point nine three units per acre and even the other highest density next to it's only seven and a half. I, 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 I'm not sure that philosophically I like the idea of using senior housing in a development like this to, to, to try to, and I, 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 I know I'll sound mean to the developer, but to jack up the profits, to make the, the profit margin because that's where the money is, because it's not a very good piece of property. And it, I'm having a hard time with that particular phase and the fa- and hopefully the commer- we've made that same comments before, the commercial phase, when we ask a developer, when you're going to put the commercial phase in, it's, well, someday. You know, hey, we're going to build all the other phases and we'll just let the commercial phase sit there and we're not going to make any effort to, to, to put commercial in on the property because it's easier to build homes than it is to find commercial people to come in on our, on our developments. And almost expecting the city economic development staff to do their job for them. Uh, and I know I'm sounding pretty blunt and probably not, uh, anyway. So that, that's my concern with this particular, uh, development plan is that I just think phase nine is out of, i- is just not consistent with what we, with what we've seen in the rest of the development and I'm concerned about the commercial phase never going in. But, you know, maybe it will someday, but I don't know, I, I'm concerned that we're, we're going to be so focused putting on, putting in homes in, in phases, the, the commercial's going to be an afterthought like we've seen in a bunch of other developments.
Thank you, any other comments or questions for staff? Okay, we will open this up again to the public. If you have anything you'd like to share with us, please come forward now. All right, seeing none, uh, we'll bring this back to the, we'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the planning commission. I do have just one question, I wanted to make sure, you're, as the representative, you got the, the additional conditions or the amended conditions that were sent to you today? Okay, just wanted to make sure you had received those, since we'll be referring to them in our motion.
Yes, I receive them this afternoon and we're, we're okay with those, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I'll enter in a motion. Commissioner England.
Based on the information and findings set forth in this staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat and preliminary site plan for the Copper Rim planned community generally located at seventy-eight hundred South, fifty-six hundred West, including the updated revised approval conditions. one through four, and then preliminary for the site plan and preliminary subdivision conditions one through five. Does that work?
Commissioner Hatch.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner England and a second by Commissioner Hatch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm gonna vote no, too.
I've got two nays? Motion passes four to two. Thank you. Uh, moving along to our final item of the night, item number seven, this is the Cobley Rezone. 1085 West, 9,000 South, rezone approximately .88 acres from A5 Zone to PO, Professional Office Zone, River Oaks Estates, LC. Robert Barris is the applicant. Sir, floor is yours, Mr., uh, Mr. Barris. Do we have an applicant?
So I'm gonna jump in right here. If you recall, uh, when the city council tabled the rezone action last June, so a year ago June, their motion included, um, direction to staff that if, uh, basically tabling it for a year, and if no, no action were to take place, bring it back in a year. We did, and about that same time, we reached out, obviously, to the property owner, which is the applicant, and, uh, and, and, uh, basically, that got the ball rolling as, as far as this request here tonight, uh, to rezone it to Professional Office. So, um, during this past year, we did not have any communication with, with the property owner. Uh, it wasn't until we, uh, got the ball rolling again, did we hear from him, and then, uh, the commercial real estate broker, we've been in, in communication with, with him. Basically, uh, if, if you have any questions, I can fill you in on the, on the history, and Ray's obviously well versed in that history as well, but it doesn't surprise me that the property owner's not here, he's been fairly absent this past year.
Okay. Any, Ray, anything you wanna add? Okay, any questions for staff? Commissioner Luthy.
I know we have the right to be able to table this with him not being here, but I think, based off of the discussion we had in the pre-meeting, I think it's worth, let's finish it out.
I agree.
A- and actually, if I could comment to that, to that line, uh, of comment, the, the city council, when we brought it back in June, they, the, the applicant reached out, the property owner reached out and said, "I've got potential buyer for the property, give me another month." So the, the council said, "Bring it, bring this item back to us, the last city council meeting in July, uh, for further discussion." This is, and, and they, they have the right to, to do whatever at that discussion, but we're, we're being proactive, and, and, and we're working with the potential, uh, buyer of the property, and we thought it was in everybody's best interest, staff, planning commission, council, property owner, potential buyer of the property, that we just get this on the agenda before you tonight, um, fulfill our requirements of holding a public hearing to talk about the, the change in zoning, and then, uh, instead of just having a, a discussion item on the council agenda next week, we actually, uh, can give the council the, the ability to officially adopt the zoning, if that makes sense. Instead of just talk about it, move forward and, and get it done.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy, anything else? Nope. Commissioner Hand, oh, Mr. McCandless.
Oh, just for benefit of the people that are here, uh, what the request is, is just to rezone the property from an agriculture A5 zone to Professional Office, to be consistent with the general plan, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. The, um, only concern I have with this, because I think, facing 90th is a good place for Professional Office, is the access off of Hidden Peak. It's already so busy with the apartments to the east, and then used to go down into, um, other developments, uh, to the south, um, is there any chance of widening a portion of Hidden Peak, just for access? Because that's such a busy street with those apartments there, and that is their only access.
Mr. McCandless.
We don't know at this point what's gonna go on the property, and so that's one of the things that we might look at when it comes back in, when a, a, a formal development application is submitted.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Green.
So my, my question is nor, as Commissioner Luthy pointed out, we normally, the applicant comes in and we have, do we need a formal, do we need a formal motion to waive the applicant's appearance, or can we just move on?
Yeah, you could move on, I mean, one option you have, you haven't actually formally opened the public hearing, right? I mean.
No.
What you could do is still open it, if there's no public comments, close it, then you've met the requirements of presenting the item, allowing for public comment, and then you could at that point either table, or the rules say you could take action, so, or whatever other options are available to you to send it to the council.
I just wanna make sure we don't need something formal here.
No, but I think you should at least open the public hearing, make sure if there's public comments or not, and then close it before you take any action. Okay, any more discussion with staff? Okay, let's open up the public meeting. It's your last chance to stand up tonight and tell us what you're thinking. Just as a reminder, please state your name for the record. And address, thank you.
My name is Lamar Burton, I live at 1091 West, 9,000 South. I live right next door to this, uh, piece of property that's in question. And here, a short time ago, us as a, myself and the neighbors went in and we re-zoned it, PO. And we tried to get, uh, Robert Barris to go in it with us, and he didn't wanna, wanna do it, so his place was eliminated from that zoning. And he had other plans that he was trying to get through on, on the property, which I didn't agree with, but that's again, but I'm really 100% for this zoning, put it in so that we're all the same in there. And I've talked to the potential buyer, and he wants to build a nice two-story office building in there, so I think that'd be a great asset for that corner lot there. So, again, I'm 100% for that, for you to carry on and rezone that, uh, PO Professional Office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, we will officially close the public hearing and bring this back to the planning commission. Commissioner Luthy.
I think it's a great fit, and I would like to make a recommendation.
Go for it.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a favorable recommendation to the city council to approve the rezoning request.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner England? All right. Any, any, uh, discussion? Okay, um, all in favor, vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero, and that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.